Please, for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving along, we have school committee minutes. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of March 29, 2018. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes? Motion second, no, thank you. Motion passes. Next. Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I would like to make a motion to go out of order.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Second motion, okay.
Thank you. So there are three items on their new business that I would like to vote on right now. Unfortunately, I have to leave early tonight and, you know, I really want to vote on them.
So we're going to move on to the third page. And it's on the last three bullets. Consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to appro- No, that's not it. Okay, okay, sorry. Ms. Alfaro moves to approve the resolution in support of extending temporary protected status for Honduras in that's enclosure K. We've been working on it. Do we have a roll call? Do we just make a motion for that, Terri? Roll call.
The resolution in support of extending temporary protected status for Honduras. Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez? Ms. Alfaro? Ms. Carlisle? Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Moronski?
Yes.
Mr. De Pato? Ms. Garcia? That's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative, motion passes. Next, Ms. Alfaro moves to approve the resolution in support of extending temporary protected status from El Salvador in that's enclosure L. Roll call.
On the motion to approve the resolution in support of extending temporary protected status for El Salvador, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez? Ms. Alfaro? Ms. Carlisle? Ms. Hernandez? Mr. Moronski? Mr. De Pato? Ms. Garcia? That's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative, motion passes.
Madam Chair, if I may, school committee members, please, before you leave this evening, stop by Terri's table over there to sign both resolutions. Thank you.
Then we have, Mr. Moronski moves to recognize Chelsea High School graduating seniors who are entering the military at the graduation ceremony. The explanation is to honor students who are entering the armed services. The school committee feels special recognition is deserved. Roll call? No, but a roll call, we just make a motion to- Do we have a motion to accept the recommendation? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any objections? Nope. Motion passes. Do we have a second? Second, okay, thank you. Okay. Now, back to our line of order. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Burke for presentations.
So I am going to ask our esteemed coordinator of the Bridge Academy at Chelsea High School, Dieter Collins, to come forward and give us an update on the highly successful summer search that goes on annually for how many years now?
At Chelsea High, it's been about 20 years, and I've been the referral partner for 17.
So 20 years and 17 as the referral partner. First of all, thank you for 17 years of running this. And I will say that many of our students have gone through the summer search program. It's inspirational, including city counselor Judith Garcia is a summer search graduate.
And fellow, I mean, and former school committee member Bobby Pereira, too.
Great. So we're instilling leadership in our students. So, Ms. Collins.
So I'm sorry, I did not bring any sort of visual or anything, but I'm going to just summarize the program a little bit. Dr. Burke reached out to me because last month I spoke at the summer search leadership dinner, which was a dinner with 700 very high-powered, very wealthy donors who use their money to support young people from Boston and Chelsea. Tonight, I'm with maybe 17 people, so a smaller group, but obviously people who support our students just as much. So the summer search program is something that I have gotten very good at explaining because kids and parents are often coming to me and saying, "What now? Really? Free? Are you sure?" But it's a foundation that, what I say to the kids is, it's a foundation with a lot of money, and they use that money to do things, to do great things for young people. And so what they use the money for is to pay for students to take summer trips. Their mission is to get kids to not just go to college, but to graduate from college. And they mostly work in Boston. We were lucky enough, when they came to the Boston area from the West Coast, a friend of mine who used to be a teacher at Chelsea High School was at a dinner party with somebody, and they were talking about this, and she said, "Well, you're going to go to Boston, why not Chelsea?" And so since they came to the area, they've been in Chelsea. They've expanded to a few other places, partly because of Chelsea. So we had a student who was a summer search kid who moved to Malden, and so summer search went to Malden, too, with him, and has now been in Malden since as well. So it's a foundation, and what they do is, they accept students, and then they pay for those students to participate in summer trips. So it's not a summer trip that summer search runs itself. These are summer trips that already exist, where other people's parents are paying $7,000 for their kids to have the opportunity to sleep in a tent and climb a mountain and not take a shower for four weeks. And our students get a scholarship to do that. So they go on programs with kids from all over the country. And that really is the summer search model, is to ask kids to do things that seem really scary, to leave their house, leave their parents, be with kids from very different backgrounds from themselves, and make it, so that when they then go to college, they've already done those things. So when kids are scared, and I say to them, "You're scared? That's great. Do the thing you're scared of now, so that you won't be scared of it later." And so the first summer, students all do wilderness trips. They get sent out on outward bound trips, they sleep in a tent, they go hiking, whitewater rafting, some of them do community service on Indian reservations, they go to states all over the country, they go to Colorado and Nevada and North Carolina and Maine, Arizona. And then their second summer, they have other opportunities. Many of them go abroad. We've had students, we haven't had many this, in the past couple of years, going this far, but several years ago, we had a student go to South Africa. She was there when the World Cup was in South Africa. Judith Garcia went to India. We've had other kids go to Italy and France. Now they mostly stay in this hemisphere, but kids last summer from Chelsea High School went on community service trips to Nicaragua, to Mexico, to Peru, and worked doing community service. It's an amazing, unbelievable opportunity, and it truly is free. And as I said, that's what parents and kids don't quite believe, but if a student is accepted, they, the trip is paid for, the travel is paid for, and then if they need anything, if they don't have hiking boots, they get hiking boots. If they don't have a big backpack, they get a big backpack. And so it's two summers of trips after your sophomore year and after your junior year, and then it's ongoing support. So it is helping kids with the college application process, with the financial aid process, and it carries on after that. So I had a girl a few years ago who came from the Dominican Republic. She's, "I'm going to be a business, I want to study business." She was in summer search. She went on two trips, and at one of these dinners, these leadership dinners, she met somebody who became her mentor, who gave her a position in a bank as an internship, and she's now an assistant president of a bank in New York City, and she's just living the life that she wanted to live. And a lot of that has happened through summer search. So it's an amazing opportunity. One other thing I think is really great about at Chelsea is that I really cast a wide net in terms of getting referrals. So in some schools, a guidance counselor gathers the names and sends them on. At Chelsea High, I ask every adult in the building, "Who are the awesome sophomores?" I don't care, they don't have to have straight A's, they don't have to be involved in a million things, who are your awesome sophomores? And I ask everybody, because I think sometimes a gym teacher sees something that a history teacher might not. Some of my best referrals from the past couple of years came from Veronica, our main office clerk. She knows the kids, you know, and so she could tell us. So it's been great. And I'm just going to finish by saying one, give you one short story that I love, that I mentioned when I made my remarks at the leadership dinner the other, last month. It was a story about a young woman named Pov. She was, her parents were refugees from Cambodia. She had never left the Boston area. And they, summer search sent her to Colorado. She slept in a tent, you know, she climbed mountains, she bathed in the river. And when she came back, she said to me, "Miss, I don't, I feel so different. I don't really know how to explain it, but I feel taller." And I love that, because she just felt like she had more presence. And she carried that through until she graduated. So that's my spiel. I don't know if I'm supposed to take questions, Dr. Burke, but I'm happy to.
Well, before you take questions, if I could just add my two cents. You know, what I love about summer search, and one of the reasons why I wanted to make sure that the school committee knows about it, it is an institutional piece of who we are in the Chelsea Public Schools. And so, you know, when you talk to students, students know about summer search. It does promote leadership, it promotes, really, there's a maturity piece. Students who leave on summer search and come back at the end of the summer, all of a sudden, they're mature. They're much more mature than when they left. There's also a piece there in terms of that community service component, because that community service component really embeds with our students that piece of social justice and that piece of giving back to a community, no matter what community they end up living in, whether they come back to Chelsea after they graduate from college, or they go on and they live in Malden or, you know, another state. It's about giving back to society and giving back to community, and that really is something that is promoted, and the students come back doing that. And then the last thing I would say is, going back to the maturity, it's maturity and it's confidence. You know, one of the things, and I've often said this, and I've said it at statewide meetings, urban kids have a harder lift when they go to college and they go out into the world, because sometimes we hear so many stories about, you know, the negative sides of being in an urban community, that they lack the confidence when they're in college or when they're in someplace else. They lack the confidence to take a lead, to take a risk, to believe in their own judgment calls, you know, when it comes to a situation. And so this program, for me, what I see in students is that they're not afraid to take a risk, and they have more confidence to take on the world. And that's why you ended up getting a vice president of a New York City bank in one of your graduates. So I thank you deeply for our 17 years of devoted service to summer search and to our students. So I will open it up to questions.
Any questions for Ms. Carlisle?
It's nice to see you. What was the way of picking students that will be able to attend or get this scholarship for this?
So I gather nominations, really, from across the school. And then the process is, it's a pretty simple, well, first we have to screen for age. So if somebody is a sophomore, but they have to be a sophomore who's 16 or younger, because they're sending them off on a trip with other young people, so it couldn't be an older sophomore. So we screen for age, and that's really it. You know, if somebody is failing all of their classes and they're going to need to go to summer school, that's not really a good candidate, but it doesn't mean they have to be passing all of their classes, because they do get support, hopefully, to do better by the end of the year. So they do a pretty simple application process, and then there's an interview. And the interview is pretty intense. It's sometimes three people on the panel, they come from summer search to the high school, there's several days where they're interviewing students for about an hour. And kids get nervous about it, but I always say, it's hard, but not hard because they're going to ask you questions you don't know the answers to, but questions that are just hard to talk about, right? So they talk about their lives, and they're just, they want to see that the students have a certain level of resilience, because if you are going to send somebody to go out into the mountains for three or four weeks, they need to be able to have some sense of self-awareness and being able to reach out for help. So after the interview process, and if they meet financial considerations as well, because it is a scholarship, so it has, students have to be, this doesn't really matter anyway, anymore, but eligible for free or reduced lunch, right? And so then they get chosen, and the first summer, when they are chosen, they're told what they're going to do. And then the second summer, then the student participates more to say, "I really want to stay and study more somewhere, I want to travel, I'm into theater, I want to do something with theater." So that second summer is more crafted by the student and their summer search mentor together.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
My question is, of the entire sophomore class, how many students would you say participate in summer search?
We have one of the biggest cohorts in the Boston area. A few years ago, when summer search got a big infusion of money, they were trying to decide if they wanted to spend a little more money at all of the schools they work with, or a lot more money at a couple of schools. And because they love our students, they decided, "We're going to spend a lot more money at Chelsea and try to recruit more." So out of the sophomore class, I probably get 150 to 200 nominations, and of the students who then come to an informational meeting, it's down to more like 70. And then of the students who fill out applications and apply, it's more like 30, and most of them get accepted.
So only 30s?
30 students in the sophomore class who get these big scholarships. They would take more. You know, it's partly about kids not doing it. I do a lot of chasing down and calling homes and things like that, but it competes also with some other summer programming that exists. And, yeah, they would love to have more, but 30 is a nice chunk of kids.
Now, is this only, I mean, I'm glad, I'm so happy to hear this, because my concern is always, like, now that we're removing citizen schools, like, what are we doing to recompensate for that, and how are students still being aware of, like, the whole college process and what is, what it's like to be a college student? One, like, for me, for example, I'm the first one in my family to go off to college, so this was totally new to me. And then my junior year, I went on a similar program, and I stayed over, and that's why, that's how I was introduced to the college life. And so my concern is, not concern, but like, is it possible to, or is there a program that is similar to summer search, but throughout the school year, where students are still able to go to campuses?
We do that. It's not just citizen schools, so we, actually, I just signed three fail trip forms before I came up here, in terms of Northeastern and Harvard. So every school does do that. Clark Avenue School does it without citizen schools. The Wright School only had citizen schools in grade five, but yet the Wright School is still doing that piece of it.
I do the summer program upward bound math and science, and they pick you up, like, right from your freshman year, and then you stay over, throughout the spring of your freshman year, you're going to, like, all their classes, they're helping you with MCAS prep, they're helping you with, like, different, just like math help, or like, whatever you're stuck on, you do study hall in order to make sure you're completing all your homework. And then over the summer, you're actually staying on BU's campus, and you're taking, like, the classes you would take your next year. And it's just like a cycle, like, they're also, like, including, like, college help, and then, like, this year, they had, like, a theme of environmental sciences, so on top of all the stuff we were learning, we were also learning about, like, the environment and, like, how to reduce our carbon footprint and stuff, so like, it was, it's like a very busy program.
Yeah, I don't want to leave you with the impression that we only did college visits because, we have been doing them for years prior to even partnering with citizen schools.
Yeah, and at the high school trio, the trio program at the high school does a lot of that. There are college visits that happen really frequently.
And they start in seventh grade.
Any other question for Ms. Collins? No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, Madam Chair, Kim Huffer, our coordinator for social workers, she is on her way. I'm going to go through the rest of the agenda, and then if she is still not here, I'd like to just go through the agenda, and then when she arrives, if I may, ask for a motion to go out of order and then have her present. She is coming from Tingsborough, where she was helping out with the girls' track team, so they had a meet, so she is on her way. So I'm going to move on to the I block video. We've been talking about a lot of different pieces to our turnaround plan at Chelsea High School. So part of these presentations is to make sure that we're orienting you and your understanding, the language, the common language, the abbreviations, and actually what it means. So I block, as you know, is part of the grant that we put into place with the grant from DESI for Chelsea High School. I stands for intervention, and it is, it is an intervention block for our students. It's intervention and acceleration. And also, we use a for guidance mentoring, as well as the mindfulness in the SEL, the social emotional learning curriculum. So it's new this year. The first couple of months was a little bit rocky with the implementation, but it's up and running beautifully now. And so I'd like to show you the I block video.
Hello, and welcome to this I block video, introducing you to the exciting possibilities of I block at Chelsea High School. In this video, we will cover the facts you need to know about I block and the purpose behind its creation. A dedicated team of principals, teachers, deans, and guidance counselors have been working hard over the summer to make I block meaningful for you. We are excited to share our work, so let's get started. In the next few weeks, we will be changing the focus of I block classes from social emotional learning, the Mind Up curriculum, to academic support and mentor Mondays. Over the next three days, we will be learning more about the details of I block. Let's look at the big picture and how I block will work each day of the week. I block is split into two sections during the week. Monday, where you will meet with your mentor teacher, and Tuesday through Friday, where you will meet with your teachers to get help. On Monday, you will meet with your mentor teacher in the classroom you are currently in. There, you will work with your mentor teacher to create your I block schedule for the rest of the week. Tuesday through Friday, you will go to the classes where you have been scheduled. You will not come to the mentor Monday classroom. Instead, you will go to your teachers' rooms and get support from them. So what does support mean? The support you receive in I block is broken up into two different categories, assignment support and extra support. Assignment support is starting, revising, or making up an assignment your teacher has given to you. This could be homework, a reading task, or a performance assessment. This time could be used for working on a weekly homework packet, conferencing with a teacher, chunking out a larger task with a teacher, peer editing, or group work. It is not a place for you to complete homework for other classes or receive new assignments from your teachers. Think of it like coming after school to get help, but it's during the day. The other type of work in I block is extra support. This type of work is to help you develop the skills you will need to be successful in class, college, or in your career. This could be guided reading, test preparation for AP, MCAS, or the SATs, or working with your teacher on fundamental skills. You may also be working with guidance counselors, social workers, or deans on college applications, financial aid, resume building, student support groups, or study skills. Here is what your week in I block will look like for the rest of the year. Monday, you meet with your mentor teacher. Tuesday through Friday, you are attending the I block sessions you are scheduled for. Below, you can see an example schedule of a typical week a student might expect. But why? Because you are busy after school, because it can only help your grades, and because you just don't have enough time. We know that getting schoolwork done can be challenging. Get your teachers to tag you, so you can take care of business and do better in school. Finally, what school thing wouldn't be complete without rules and expectations? I block is a class that you are required to attend. Attendance will be taken by your teachers every day. While you are there, you are expected to be on task and working on assignments with support from your teacher or classmates. Phones and technology are only allowed for academic purposes. During I block, all normal school rules still apply. We know school can be challenging. It is our hope that I block will give you the space you need to be successful. We care about your success, and we know you care about your success. Remember, we are all in this together.
Does anyone have any question?
Yes, I want to know how mentors picked. Is it their home room teachers, or how are they assigned, the students assigned?
In terms of mentors?
Yes.
I actually am not quite sure. I'm going to ask Ms. Collins to answer that one.
Thank you. Do you want to sum that up, Dr. Burke? Just because we didn't ask you to go to the microphone, so people can hear it at home.
I think, in summary, students are assigned mentors based on who they have, so that there's a relationship built in ninth grade, and then it continues vertically ninth grade through 12th grade. So special education teachers will be taking their special education students, and so it's a vertical, we used to call it looping, so you'd loop with the student every year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Garcia?
I just have a quick one. Tuesday through Friday, it's either extra support, or what was the other?
It could be acceleration or challenge projects. So we do have a second video for you, and you've heard a lot about capstone. And so I want to make sure that we're understanding what capstone is at Chelsea High. And again, this is something that has been institutionalized, and it is part of who we are and what we do. The State Department of Education is looking at our model to actually use as and replicate when it comes to the history and social science piece, as they roll out the new history and social science curriculum, especially around the fact that we are prioritizing performance assessments and reflection on- and reflection on how, you know, your own work, how you own it, and where you want to get better at it. And I will say that this next video is starring our own Rosselli.
Good day, C H S folks, and welcome back to V O G News with Sully and Jess. Today we have quite the lineup. First, beginning with breaking news. We just received information that capstone is coming up from April 9th to the 13th. Students seem to be a bit confused, Jess. Oh, no, but that's why V O G News is here to help you survive capstone. But what exactly is capstone, Jess? Capstone is a perfect opportunity to reflect on past assignments. It helps promote students to learn from their past mistakes and to grow as learners. Why don't we give you a simplified version of capstone? The first step to a successful capstone is finding two old assignments that need revision. This can reach from an English assignment to a project in percussive groups. Any of your assignments graded on Rubik is eligible. The second and most important step is revision. This is where you can go back on those two assignments and really analyze your mistakes. This is a perfect time to communicate with the teachers and see what they expected from you in this assignment. Ooh, sounds like perfect college preparation. And the final and third step is presentations. Students will be assigned a certain date to present their capstone to their I-Block teacher. They must have a PowerPoint presentation. This is your time to prove to your teachers how serious you will take this capstone process and self-learning into the shaping of your future and applying it to other assignments and simply other parts of your life. That sounds just about right, Jess. And now we're going to go to, straight to the weather forecast with Malcolm and Kira.
V O G Forecast with Malcolm and Kira.
Today, we are going to talk about the weather for capstone. It's looking real sunny, right?
I just want to remind everyone, you don't have to be here until 11:00 unless you have a capstone appointment before that.
Thank you for that forecast, Malcolm and Kira. And now we're going to go live with our capstone correspondent, Captain Capstone. Someone needs capstone help!
What was that?
Someone needs capstone help!
I'm on it! Oh, my God, I have to do capstone. Why do I have to do this? I got my grade, I don't know like what else to improve. And to be honest, I don't know where to start.
Don't fear, Captain Capstone is here. What you should do is definitely take time with it and separate it into pieces. What you need to do is work little by little and get it done, sir.
Where should I start?
You know what you should do? You should definitely talk to a teacher and stay after school or before school or even during class if you have extra time.
Oh, that sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Capstone.
No problem, sir.
I don't know how to revise a P A. I don't know how to put it on a PowerPoint. I just wish I had some help, man.
You do, for Captain Capstone is here. So what I suggest for you is to look on over the Rubik, okay? If the teacher left comments, look over those comments. Take them seriously, work hard on them. And if they didn't, go after school. The teachers are here for you to succeed in life and in capstone. Also, use your P A and your PowerPoint presentation as evidence for your argument, okay?
Okay.
No problem, sir. To where your capstone. Thank you, Captain Capstone.
Oh, my God. I got so many things to do. I have to do my capstone, I have to go work, and I have to practice. I don't know what I'm gonna do. I just don't have time to do it.
Don't fear, for Captain Capstone is here. You always have time. You always do. You have breakfast, you have I-Block, you also have your lunch. You have, we have four lunches for crying out loud, and one of them is yours. Use that time wisely.
And if I need help, choose who should I ask?
You have so many people to ask. You can ask me, you can ask the cameraman, you can even ask the lunch ladies. Anyone can help you in this school, especially your teachers mostly.
Thank you, Captain Capstone.
No problem, sir.
Overall, capstone is flexible for everyone, don't you think, Jess? Yes, it completely is. Anyone can do it. A reminder to everyone that capstone does have its benefits. It helps you gain many skills from presenting and reflecting on your work. Also, if you don't want to fail, capstone does appear on your transcript, which means colleges will see that F, and nobody wants that. Oh, and for upper class men, if you don't intend capstone, you can't go to prom, and we don't want that. And that's all for V O G News. Remember that if you don't have anything for capstone, still attend your appointment because simply showing up is better than nothing at all.
Mr. Sully, would you like to add anything to that? So just a couple of things. You know, what we believe deeply in is the growth mindset, which is opposite than a status mindset. And when I went to school, when you went to school, and you took a test in that test or you took a couple of tests and that was it, that was going to be your grade on the report card. With capstone, we're really talking about being able to go back and revise and learn from your mistakes, and your grade improves. You're not going to be stuck in that status of the original grade when you passed it in. It also teaches our kids about revision, that revision is good. Revision is a learning experience unto itself. The presentations are extremely important because we all need to get better at public presentations. When they go to college, our kids are going to have to do presentations all the time. And lastly, I will say that students have come back to us and have given us feedback in the last few years since we've been doing this, that capstone actually has been the, one of the best things to prepare them for college. It helps them with time management, it helps them to be able to chunk out those large projects and those large research papers that they have to do, and the presentations. So our students in their first year of college are actually, we don't have hard data on it at this point, but anecdotally, we are seeing that they are actually more successful than students who attend a high school without a capstone experience. And this is an experience that goes through all four years. So it's ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade.
So students are doing it every year?
Yes.
Any further questions on, Mr. DePater?
Are students involved in I-Block and capstone at the same time?
Yes. I mean, at certain points, they can also use I-Block to work on their, you know, capstone presentation and get help from teachers too.
In I-Block, you're using capstone. They'll give you like a little, like they showed this video during your I-Block so you can know what to do for your capstone. Like they'll give you like periods, set periods of time during I-Block. Like I remember we blocked up a whole week where it was just Mentor Monday, where we reported to our mentor class, and we just worked on our capstone for that week.
I think Rosselli's eyes are saying it all. All right. So Ms. Huffer is here. Are you ready or do you need some time? So let me frame Ms. Huffer's presentation. We usually don't do this many presentations, and I apologize, but we've, we had, we had some big presentations throughout the spring and we weren't able to, because of time commitments, we weren't able to get everything, you know, paced out incrementally. So we did put them on for tonight. Ms. Huffer's presentation actually was something that came, it's more of an urgent nature for me. Especially where we only have one month left before we go on summer break. We are seeing a dramatic increase in our community of young people of all ages using marijuana. And especially now the access is easier to obtain it. Part of it is the vaping. So vaping is something new. I needed to be educated on it. Actually, one day I said to Terry, "Terry, Google vaping and give it to me." Because we had some young people in our schools who were caught vaping. We are having, you know, the access is, they're accessing both the vapors, which look like little jump drives or U S B drives, as well as they look like, they can look like pens, et cetera. But I want us all to be educated on what is trending because this is going to get worse before it gets better. It is against the law for young people to be doing this, and it is definitely against our handbook, and discipline does take place. At this point in the school year, the youngest that we have had in terms of students who have been brought forward for discipline is grade six. So I just want to, this is more for educational piece, and we will revisit this, especially moving into next year because as Ms. Huffer will talk about, she's going to be doing some parental education as well as she will, will be doing somewhat of a campaign moving into next year to make sure that, you know, our community knows about this and the harmful effects, especially on the young brain, to be using and to be using chronically, you know, almost daily sometimes with young, young students on the developing brain is, is the hardest thing because that is where it's going to impact the cognitive piece.
Hi, everyone. This is not my typical work attire, so it is not the new Mary Burke dress code for school staffs. But thank you for having me. Hopefully this will work. I think Mary did half of what I was going to talk tonight about vaping. It is something that we are seeing kind of trending across the country. It's not just in Chelsea, but some of our local communities have really been seeing it a lot more with their students and are now kind of starting to do some campaigns with parents as well as with students with awareness and some prevention. So what do we need to know? A few years ago, we had the big kind of rush with e-cigarettes. And so you've heard of maybe a hookah pen, a vape pen, e-cigarettes. They're all kind of the same names for the same thing. They're a little tiny bit different in how they work. But the term really comes from this pen that is, it's called vaping, and people think that they're vaping like a flavored water. And that's actually not what it is. So you're not actually vaping a water. It's really the aerosol that this container is producing. So there is a battery in it, it heats up the liquid, and then as you are vaping, you're vaping actually the aerosol fumes. So it's often referred to as vape juice. Many of them, the majority of it, contains nicotine, different amounts of nicotine. But what we're seeing kind of with the big trend is the use of T H C oil, which is marijuana. So some of the things that we're seeing, and some of the common ones are the vape pens. So it looks like a fountain pen. And again, there are some that are disposable, there are some that you can get a refillable cartridge. You'll see a lot of different flavors in some of the marketing. The second one is a jewel, and so that actually looks like a U S B drive. So it looks like something you're going to put into the computer. And then the colored pieces, each one of those is probably the equivalent of a pack of cigarettes, has about the same amount of nicotine. And then they just kind of replace those. And then the vape mods are more of like a personalized, they're a lot more expensive, so it's not necessarily things that we're seeing in students. But people can personalize it to kind of the intensity that they want. And so what is in the liquid? Again, a lot of people think it's just a flavored water. So we have nicotine, and we have definitely the flavorings, this, I'm going to butcher this, but propylene glycol. And what is happening is actually there are, kind of with the aerosol, you're getting some of the carcinogens, you're getting things like formaldehyde and things that people just aren't aware is actually kind of coming through as they're being vaped. So this is the marketing for these vape juices. And there, if you do a Google search for vape juice, you will be surprised at what comes up. There are so much marketing out there that you can see, the one up there looks like little Fanta. So you think they're taking off the marketing of Fanta with all the different flavors. There are some that are kind of looking like it's candy, so it's very appealable to kind of the younger crowd. And so sometimes there is also the awareness with parents that they may not realize that this is kind of a vape juice with nicotine or with T H C in it. So the risks, and this is what we really need to kind of make sure the parents are aware as well as the students, is that there are those unfriendly particles. So like I said, the formaldehyde, some of the carcinogens, it really can impact and affect people with asthma. And the second thing is really about taking in the nicotine and how it can go straight to the brain in eight seconds. And it creates this pathway in your, in the brain of like a quick reward, which is really involved in addiction. So there's some studies that are coming out now about people that are using e-cigarettes or vaping thinking that it's minor, but it's leading to a nicotine addiction. And then just the impact on the developing brain. So what we're seeing specifically with the T H C, we know that the, the brain is not really fully developed until around 25 years of age. And so it's creating these little synapses. We're seeing some impact with self-regulation, with mood disturbances, and just not being able to kind of use all that executive, executive functioning skills that we need to be successful. So Mary kind of highlighted my next steps. The city of Chelsea is lucky to have a couple opportunities with M G H and with the Healthy Chelsea Coalition. We have a couple of different grants. One is the Sapsy Grant, which goes around to our neighboring communities of Revere, Winthrop, and one other community that I cannot remember right now, as well as the Drug Free Community Grant. And both of those grants are really focused on parent involvement, kind of doing that awareness with parents, as well as prevention efforts and some strategies. So one of the things that we are in the process of organizing is a May Parent Forum so that we can actually have these things where parents can see and can kind of be aware of that, as well as, so how do you talk to your kids about it? How do you talk to your kids so they will listen or ask the questions instead of, ah, being very alarmist? The second thing that we're working on is really about how do we have youth become aware of this and work on prevention and really talk about kind of the harm reduction. And the third thing we're seeing is, again, we're seeing this use, and we really want kids to get treatment and services at an early age. So kind of typically, the services don't start until you're 16, 17, 18. So we're really working with some partnerships actually outside of Chelsea to really focus on the younger students that we're seeing in the middle school that are starting to experiment and are starting to use in a real harm reduction model. That's kind of where we're at.
So just to follow up on Ms. Huffer too, I want to say, you know, when she talks about the impact on the brain, especially around the area of self-regulation and mood disturbances, that's where we're looking at, you know, students with the lack of control impulse, you know, impulsivity, and anger and outbursts, which end up being discipline problems. And so with this and with the increase, we're seeing a correlation of students getting into trouble on discipline because they don't have the control to not disrespect a teacher or an adult who's told them to do something. So that's another example. I have a question. Go ahead, Mr. DePater.
Don't worry, that will identify students that may be doing some of this stuff. Are we doing anything for the parents to alert them that this is going on? Is there a mailing going out?
So the first thing-
General mailing in the city of Chelsea?
So the first thing that we want to do is have the parent forum and kind of hear what the parents are asking and the questions so that we can provide the resources. So there's a couple different ideas about, are we going to put some resources on our website and some of the local websites to have it available? Is a mailing the best thing? I think that is, we're trying to figure out what is the best strategy. So sometimes we're thinking about social media, are we going to put something on Facebook with awareness? So I don't know if we have exactly a parent mailing, but that, we are hoping with the parent forum to kind of really hear what parents want to know so that we can provide them with the best.
Parent mailings have not been successful, however, Facebook, Twitter, and our website, that's the most accessed areas, so that would be-
So I guess my next question is, if you have a chronic person that's doing this and he's in a building, 15, 1600 kids. and he's in a building, 15, 1600 kids, do we have a plan for that?
Absolutely. So we do have our school nurses. If you're talking just Chelsea High, then we have MGH Clinic for the medical and then we do have social workers for the clinical. But then we need to refer them for ongoing substance abuse intervention. Because remember, we're only in school and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to bring it up publicly tonight. We end on June 21st. So what happens during the summer? You know, we're not in control of the student. That's where we need to make sure that we're having referrals and parents can take students and for, you know, the addiction piece. And it's extremely sad. It's extremely sad.
So just to piggyback on what Mary said, so anytime there's a student who is under the influence or in possession of a substance, they go through an assessment with the social worker at the school. Parent is notified and then there are kind of four or five different options for services that we present to the student and the parent. So some of it is a school-based treatment. So we have school therapists that come in and meet with the student in the school. Some of it is community-based, some of it is in the clinic. So there are different options based on level of need.
So I imagine his status in the school is jeopardized. You've got someone that's chronic and he's assigned a social worker?
So every student has access to a social worker at the school. So if they're assigned a social worker, it's usually a referral. We have South Bay Community Services comes into the school as well as Institute of Health and Recovery. So we have two community partners that come in and those are the students that usually have the treatment with those providers.
I think all of our concerns is that's, it sounds to me like wildfire, wildfire, and this thing could just go out of control.
Well, I think that's part of why also, again, I'm highlighting it because it's a trend that we're seeing and, you know, I'm never one to hide something that's negative. I told you, we did the positive tonight. This is definitely something negative. But again, I will say that the schools only have students 20% of the entire school year. We need community. We need parents. We need guardians. We need aunts. We need uncles. And I'll put this out there. I'm sure many of you sat here while the pictures were going up and saying, I didn't know it looked like that. I didn't know it looked like- and that's the truth because it's a generational gap really on a lot of it. But at the same time, we have some of our students are accessing it similar to how they access the opioid crisis. And so it's within their own home. So that's the piece that we have to also be aware of. So-
I'm just curious. Is this stuff being sold in local stores? Where are they buying it? Online or can they walk into a local bodega and?
So they are, the vape juice is being sold in stores. You can get it online. There's plenty. You can get a subscription package if you want. So it is sold online. So is the THC oil is also sold online. I expect that probably with the change in the law and with different places coming up that we're gonna see a lot more places selling the THC oil locally.
Ms. Carlyle?
They're not allowed to-
No, they are not allowed.
There's a difference between, well, let me put it to this way. That would be like smoking a cigarette in school, right?
That's what I'm saying. We don't allow this in the classroom, do we, or in Chelsea High School, right?
No, it is not allowed, but I think it's harder to identify, right? So you're seeing something that looks like a pen, you know, from a distance. So and so they're marketing in a way that it's not as identifiable, but it is not allowed in school.
Yeah, it's not-
Wait, if someone smokes it in the classroom, you can be like, I just smell like strawberries all of a sudden. You know what I mean? Like, it's like perfume, but a little bit like, more like bitter.
Do the students know that? They're not allowed to have that in school?
Absolutely. Yes. It's in the handbook. It's absolutely, and keep in mind, they're not allowed to have it under age 21, too.
Ms. Huffer, I'm glad that you are doing this, you know, sort of educational steps at the school. We only have the students for a certain amount of hours and for a larger social issue that we all have as a community of responsibility of. I would like to tag along on the next steps. I work at the Chelsea Collaborative. We have the larger summer youth employment program and maybe we can coordinate some sort of a educational session to the parents that comes there because I know we, as a school, we are responding to a larger issue that is not only in our end. That is, once again, a community responsibility. So I'm glad that as the school district, we are taking, you know, care of this and educating the parents and the students to do the best that we can for the few hours that we have those students.
Absolutely.
I will make sure that Jen Kelly gets in touch with you for the collaborative so we can do further parent forums.
Mr. Tejada?
This is one of those subjects that absolutely just, I hate it. It kills me. At the city council, we're about to like determine where it is that the dispensaries are gonna be allowed. And I remember when I first came into the council about three years ago saying to our Chief Kais, I said, you know, it's things that we live in a hypocritical country where everybody in the city is doing everything they can to say no to drugs, you know, on behalf of the kids and everything. And at the federal level, we're approving marijuana. And I, you know, the reality is, like, when I went to vote for it, I ended up changing my vote to yes because of all the chemicals. And I figured if the government has something to do with it, it'll be safer for the kids. But the real challenge is that when you have gummies, you got cookies, you got chocolate bars, you got vapes, you're getting rid of the big stigma, right? And the big stigma is if I go outside and smoke a spliff and come back in here, everybody's gonna smell me. Right? Well, you don't have that problem anymore, which makes your job so much challenging, you know, at the school committee. And it's just a terrible thing, but it's such a great thing that you guys are spearheading this this way and at least starting the conversation. Because not everybody drinks, right? So just 'cause there's gonna be liquor shows doesn't mean all kids are gonna be walking around drunk. But it's because of your efforts and I just wanna thank you for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Garcia?
Like, I know we're trying to involve the parents, but I'm wondering, are students also presenting this information?
So right now in our middle schools, we have what's called the Life Skills Substance Use Curriculum. And so part of that, there is a lesson around vaping. I'm not sure if exactly how that is presented, but there is a piece about kind of the information as well as decision-making. So the second part of our community involvement with Healthy Chelsea and the Drug Free Community Grant is really looking at youth awareness and prevention. So they are actually gonna have a team of youth kind of help spearhead this awareness and prevention strategies that will probably come into place end of summer next year. They just received that grant. They just hired their grant manager a few weeks ago. So that is a huge piece of that awareness. So yes.
Thank you, Ms. Huffer.
Thank you, Ms. Huffer.
And in case you didn't know, Ms. Huffer is the one who won the MIAA award, so congratulations.
Yes.
So moving on, next we have our public comment section. If there's any member of the audience that would like to address the school committee, please feel free to come to the podium. Seeing that there isn't anybody, the public comment section closes. Next, we're moving on to the report of the superintendent of schools.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would ask Assistant Superintendent Sarah Kent to come forward for the indicators of success for the month of April. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are going to, I'm gonna be able to report to you on the monthly indicators of success as well as the quarterly updates as the third quarter has ended and we have data on that, as well as the mobility rates and grades. So if we could start on page three with the attendance. So grades two through six were over 95% this last month and near their goal for the year. Pre-K through one and seven and eight were close this month and CHS is still struggling in the middle 80s. Overall, year-to-date for the district, we are approximately the same place we were last month at 92.4% with our goal being 95. If you could turn to page four. Our third quarter grades for our fourth grade students have been entered. And you will see that in reading and writing, they have both gone up approximately nine points. Math, only four, and science, two, but science was way ahead of the pack to begin with. You'll also notice that writing has surpassed where we finished last year at this time. If you could turn to page five, I can show you the middle school grades, the eighth graders. All of these have also risen and are currently higher than they were at the end of last year. Some of that is just by a little bit, but they are already in third quarter better than where we landed. ELA is up four points, writing eight, math one, and science two. If you could turn to page six. The dropout rate, we have had 101 students drop out so far this year. That's 11 more this month than we had last month. And seven of those are ELL students. So we are about 1.5% above, dropout rate is about 1.5% above the same time last year. But you can see from the table below that that's 59 out of 529 are L students, leaving 11% of our Ls have left. The details of this is on page seven. Where you'll see that of the 11 students that have withdrawn, two were from regular education, seven were from, were limited English proficient, and two were students with disabilities. And the most dropped out of grade 10. If you could turn to page nine, please. This is our mobility rate. Overall, as a district, this month, we have added nine students. But that is because we have gained a few students in the ELC Elementary and Middle Schools and lost about 10 students at the high school. As a district, so far this year, we're up 121 students from where we started. And we've had a total of 1,179 students either come or go. And then on the final page, on page 10, are our failure rates for grade nine and grade 10. And this is something that we're monitoring closely with our turnaround plan at Chelsea High School. You'll see that the ninth grade failure rate has risen to approximately 54%. And the 10th grade, however, has dropped. And the part that we're very proud of is you'll notice that in the grade 10 row, that is one failing grade, we have 35 less students this quarter that are failing one class, which means that they're not failing any classes, which is great. Meanwhile, you'll notice that failing more than one class has remained stable, meaning that those students are actually not failing any classes. It's not that they're failing more classes. So that's a bonus, although both of these numbers are ones we would like to see much higher and we are working on. We're hoping that that is a result of I-Block and a lot of the work that the teachers are doing around the edges. Be happy to take any questions. I know I moved quickly.
I, just looking at that grade nine, the failing grades, any thoughts why maybe it's so high or?
Yeah, one of the things that is different this year is the new schedule. We have courses that are year-long courses for core courses in grades nine and 10, as well as some courses that are semester-long now. But most of what kids are doing in grade nine are year-long courses. I'm just thinking curriculum is harder. I mean, you know, we are tracking it and trying to really parse out who, what classes those are, what students those are, what teachers those are, and trying to put some real interventions in place for them. Stuff gets harder in third quarter.
Any questions?
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Moving on, I'd like to, Madam Chair, I'd like to commend to the report, the personnel update, which is enclosure B. We have 12 new hires and 10 resignations, retirements, and terminations. Also enclosure C, I would like to commend to the report. We have, it's the enrollment report. We have 6,318 students in the district, 185 out-of-district students for a total enrollment of 6,503. And finally, moving to my communications this evening. I'm gonna go through the list of wonderful events and it's just a summary event. I encourage you to check the website for our calendar for the more comprehensive calendar of our events. But you know that May and June, we're very busy because we have a lot of night, you know, celebrations going on in all of our schools. I apologize. So May 4th at 6:30 PM, which is tomorrow night, our intergenerational literacy program awards ceremony at our ELC. So we invite you to come. It's always an inspiring award ceremony to see adult students achieving their certificates as well as many of our students who do drop out are enrolled in the HICEP program at the ILP, which is the GED program, and they will be getting their awards at that ceremony. On May 11th at 7:30, you're welcome to attend the Hooks Elementary School Muffins with Mom Breakfast. We also have on May 11th, the District Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. On May 18th, the Early Learning Center has kindergarten orientation. And also on May 18th, the Sokolowsky School Cultural Family Night. On May 19th, we have Chelsea High School Prom. And I believe it's at the Cambridge Hyatt? May 23rd, we have the Clark Avenue School Spring Concert at 6 o'clock. At 9:30 in the morning, we have the Sokolowsky School Spring Concert. We have on May 28th Memorial Day Holiday. There is, there are no, there's no school and the offices are closed, but we welcome you to the front lawn of City Hall for the Memorial Day Celebration. On May 29th, we have the Chelsea High School Pathway Recognition Ceremony, as well as May 30th at 6:00 PM, the Spring Concert at the Williams Middle School. On May 31st, 7 o'clock, Chelsea High School Arts Night Out. June 1st, Chelsea High School Seniors Last Day and Field Day. On June 6th, Chelsea High School Senior Awards. On June 7th, our next school committee meeting. And we will be honoring our Students of the Year and our retirees at that, at that school committee meeting. And then that is Thursday night. The following Sunday, which is June 10th, Rusally, what is that? Chelsea High School graduation. So we're very excited and looking forward to that. My last comment this evening, you have, it's a peach-colored piece of paper and it's titled "The Massachusetts Legislative Process Flowchart." And so for all intents and purposes, this is how a bill becomes a law in Massachusetts. And I would, I marked it up for us because we need to make sure that we're continuing to put the advocacy and the pressure on our state. And most certainly, anyone who also lives in other communities in the state, please talk to them because it's not just our representatives and senator that need to be voting yes on this bill. on this bill. We need other representatives and senators. So if you have friends and relatives that live in other communities in the state, please get them to also advocate and to, and to, and to say, "Support Senate Bill Twenty-three Twenty-Five." So let me just explain briefly, over on the right-hand side, the Senate Bill, Sonia Chang Diaz's bill that started out as Senate Bill Two-Two-Three that I kept talking about all year, it went through committee. When it comes out of committee, the Senate Bill, they changed the number. So the new number is Senate Bill Twenty-three Twenty-Five. And that's the bill that is now going forward. May tenth next week, it will be debated in the Senate, up at the State House. And then we do think that it will, it will probably sail through the Senate. We think that the harder lift is actually gonna be the House of Representatives to get this bill through. And remember, this is the bill which is titled "An Act Modernizing the Foundation Budget Formula for the Twenty-First Century." This is the bill that will fix our formula problem and give us more money if we can get it passed. Ultimately, it has to be passed, so there's about two and a half months, it has to be passed by July twentieth, because it has to land on the governor's desk. And the governor then has ten days to sign it or to put it there and let it die. We don't want it to die. So, you know, I ask that our advocacy expand beyond Chelsea and email, call relatives, friends, anybody and everybody across the state, because we need to be able to carry this forward with the majority vote of our senators, the majority vote of our representatives in the state. So I will leave it and ask you if you have any questions before I hand it back to you, Madam Chair.
Questions? Well, I just wanna add, I went to the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Day on the Hill and Salda Domenico was the guest speaker. It was great sitting in a room full of school committee members from across the state. And he made it very clear, you know, he's on board. We're fortunate to have a senator that supports us and believes in public school education and our state reps also support us. But he did urge everybody, even to those school districts that are not facing the same problems as us, to pressure their senators and their state reps to vote on this bill. So I think we should make a final push to other senators out of our district to get their support on this bill. That's all I wanted to add on that.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Burke. Moving on to committee reports, budget and finance, Ms. Enriquez, you read the subcommittee reports.
The budget and finance subcommittee met on Wednesday, April eleventh, present with Anna Hernandez, Josenia Alfaro, Lucy Enriquez, also Michael Mason, Business Manager. The meeting was called to order at five-fifty-five. Members reviewed the budget transfers for the current period, which none required the approval of the full committee. Mr. Mason presented the following grant for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty-eight school year. Social workers' state grant for seventy-five thousand to reduce school violence in Chelsea Public Schools. This grant is aligned with the state's overarching goal to prepare all the students for success after high school. E-rate reimbursement, digital connections partnership schools grant for the amount of one sixty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty-nine for the two twenty-fifteen Wi-Fi infrastructure project. Early childhood education program improvement. The purpose of this federal grant is to support preschool district activities to ensure that eligible children with disability age three and five receive a free and appropriate public education that includes special education and related services designed to meet the individual's needs and that is provided in nationally restricted environments. Funds for the ELC will support the purchase of curriculum and instructional supplies materials. Chelsea Thrive, the neighborhood developers' grant on behalf of the Chelsea Thrive Opportunity Task Force to support a self-defense boxing club at the Chelsea High School. Funds will be used for instructional equipment in the amount of nine hundred seventy-eight. Chelsea SYN of the Year Procedure Report. Mr. Mason reviewed, reviewed it and it will be sent in to all the school committee members for review too. The Power Options Solid Energy Agreement, the school committee must vote to authorize agreements over the three years in duration. Resolution for Clark Avenue Middle School Solar Panel Project Power Options. A motion was made by Ms. Anna Hernandez to be presented at the regular meeting for the resolution and action item. Ms. Ms. Carlisle seconded. So the meeting adjourned was at six-twenty-five. So the next meeting was scheduled for Wednesday, May nine, and that will be rescheduled for May twenty-third.
Okay. So.
I was there at the meeting.
Do we have a motion to?
Amended.
Amend the meeting minutes to add, Ms. Carlisle. Do we have a second? Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll have to amend and resubmit. Budget and Finance Subcommittee met yesterday. In attendance was myself, Ms. Hernandez, Ms. Alfaro, Ms. Enriquez, Ms. Carlisle, Mr. McHugh, and Mr. Mason. Meeting was called to order at six-forty-two. We reviewed budget transfers. Mr. McHugh described preliminary year-end projections and budget transfers expected to be ready by June thirtieth, twenty-eighteen. There will be an action item presented to the school committee tonight for approval of the budget transfers to various accounts, which will include salaries for the Director of the Parent Information Center, special education, facilities maintenance, to fix the science lab, change the layout and furniture, ELC playground, project and sidewalks at the Sokolowski School, and change the school clocks, upgrade the security system at the Chelsea High School. And keeping in mind, this is twenty-eighteen budget, this is nothing of our new school budget FY nineteen. Mr. McHugh also explained the action item to enter into agreement with Power Options Constellation Energy for six-year period beginning June twenty-eighteen for the purchase of electricity supply. The school committee must vote to authorize the agreement over three years. Meeting adjourned at seven-nineteen. Do we have a motion to accept the budget? Second? Okay. Next, Policy and Procedures, met on April twelve. In attendance, Ms. Garcia, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. DePato, Mr. Maransky, and Superintendent Burke. Meeting was called to order at five-fifty-four. Items on the agenda, they discussed universal enrollment with Charter Academy. They talked about the TPS DACA resolution. They reviewed some updates for the student handbooks. Mr. Maransky would like military recognition at the Chelsea High School graduation. And they also talked about Chelsea Community Schools MOU. And meeting adjourned at six-forty-three PM. Do we have a motion to accept the policy and procedures? Do we have a second? Next, do we have a report of our student rep?
Um, my name is Selly Jimenez and I'm here to deliver the Student Representative Report. First, I wanna address Ms. Huffer's presentation. Actually, it's quite convenient that she mentioned this today, because a couple weeks ago, I went to Student Government Day and they proposed a bill about the tobacco use and a lot of kids were rejecting that bill because they didn't, they weren't seeing like jewels being mentioned or any like vape pens or electronic cigarettes, which is what's more modern in this day. So it's good to see like that it's spreading awareness. The first time I saw it was like in middle school and I had no idea what it was. And like as, like I didn't know it was called, like it was called a jewel until Student Government Day, 'cause I don't know, I'm just not with that stuff. So like, yeah, it's good that we're bringing more awareness to the community and I know some of my friends use it, but I've never actually seen it like personally. Just to like an update on the school, since it's the last month for seniors, seniors are just looking at like an easy passage, just an easy nice couple of weeks, just passing in their performance assessments, making sure they have everything set for their colleges. May first was the deadline for college down payment, so a lot of students have confirmed where they're going for college. I know personally, I'm going to UMass Amherst and I'm very excited for that. AP exams begin next week, so students, even seniors like me, I'm taking three APs, so I'm stressing over it to make sure I'm studying, but after AP exams, which is going over the next two weeks, it's looking like a pretty easy rest of the school year. And just like after every vacation, April vacation just passed, but students still seem to be struggling getting into the motions things, especially since the last April vacation was the end of a quarter and now we're jumping into a new quarter. So we're, we're still like trying to pick up the slack. And spring sports, well, they were, they have been started, but like they're now really getting into motion. I know a lot of meets, games, everything has been postponed because of like, there's winter one week and then it's rain the next week and then it's like eighty degrees yesterday. So it's, it's a very complicated weather schedule, but now the next couple of weeks are looking like we can finally have some outdoors games. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jimenez.
Congratulations.
Moving on to new business. Resolution to support the project to install solar panels on the roof of the Clark Avenue Middle School. Consideration and action was this one, said two different ones, I'm all confused today. Or options.
It's under your business.
Okay. So for this resolution, Terry, do we do a roll call or we just make a motion to accept?
We should probably do a roll call.
Roll call.
On the motion to accept the resolution to support the project to install solar panels on the roof of the Clark Avenue Middle School, Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative, two absent, motion passes. Consideration and action to authorize a duration of twenty years for a power supply agreement with Power Options Solid Energy to purchase solar panel-generated electrical supply for the new Clark Ave Middle School. The solar panels will be located on the roof of the school. We have been in discussion with Power Options, a state-organized power purchasing consortium with whom we are a member, to provide solar panels for the new Clark Ave Middle School through their solar development partner, Solid Energy. This system will use co-location financing model, which means Power Options Solid will pay for the installation and maintenance of the system and the school will enter into a twenty-year agreement to purchase the electricity generated through the solar panels. The system, although maximizing the space available for the installation, will be relatively small, providing about seven percent of the electricity needs of the school. However, a conservative forecast of costs indicate that forty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-nine return to Chelsea Public Schools over the life of the contract. More importantly, the agreement will provide energy budget stability for the Clark Ave Middle School as electricity supply costs are projected to increase three to seven percent annually. The school committee must vote to authorize agreements over three years in duration. Roll call?
On the motion to authorize a duration of twenty years for power supply agreement with Power Options Solid Energy to purchase solar panel-generated electrical supply for the new Clark Avenue Middle School, Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative, two absent, motion passes. Consideration and action to enter an agreement with Power Options Constellation Energy for a six-year period beginning June twenty-eighteen for the purchase of electricity supply. Power Options, a state-organized power purchasing consortium with whom we are a member, has competitively procured Constellation Energy as the consortium's new electricity supplier through June twenty-twenty-three. Our current energy supply agreement will expire in June of twenty-nineteen and we need to get the new Clark Ave school into a supply agreement in June of twenty-eighteen. This action will allow the school department to lock in favorable electricity rates for the life of the Constellation contract. For example, using current pricing for the twenty-nineteen, the school department would have eighty-six thousand dollars per year based on the current three-year rate. The school committee must approve all agreements over three years in duration. Roll call?
On the motion to enter into an agreement with Power Options Constellation Energy for a six-year period beginning June twenty-eighteen for the purchase of electricity supply, Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative, two absent, motion passes. Ms. Enriquez moves to accept the following grants for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year. State Grant, Social Worker to Reduce School Violence in Chelsea Public Schools for seventy-five thousand dollars. Federal Grants, E-rate reimbursement, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. Early Childhood Special Education Program Improvement, three thousand dollars. Private Grant, Chelsea Thrives, nine hundred and seventy-eight. Chelsea Public Schools are eligible for certain state and federal grants available to provide support and supplemental services for certain school populations. These grants are distributed to the states and then by the states to the eligible districts. An explanation of each grant is contained in the budget book. Funding is provided for the cost of supplementary staff, professional development, and grant-specific school activities, supplies, materials, and technology. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-seven-A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
On the motion to accept the state, federal, and private grants in the amount of two hundred and forty-seven thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents, Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative, two absent, motion passes. Mr. Maransky moves to accept the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen Parent and Student Handbook changes for each of the nine schools. According to Mass General Laws, parent and student handbooks must be approved by school committee prior to the start of the school year. Roll call?
Um, no.
No, we don't need. Okay. So do we have a motion to accept the, the parent handbooks with the thing? Second? No objection, motion passes. Next, we have Mr. Maransky moves to accept a memorandum of agreement between the Chelsea School Committee and the City Manager on behalf of the City of Chelsea's Community Schools Program. Do we do a roll call for that or just a motion to accept?
A motion.
Okay. Okay. So do we have a motion to accept the MOU between the Chelsea School Committee and the City Manager for the Chelsea Community Schools? Do we have a second? Mr. DePato? No objection, motion passes. Mr. Maransky moves to approve a motion to allow Dr. Burke to explore universal enrollment design with Excel Academy for possible implementation of twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year if beneficial to both school organization. Explanation, Excel Academy draws most grade-five students from exiting grade-four students at the Kelly Elementary School due to the parent word of mouth. Therefore, Excel Academy does not have too aggressive, do aggressive recruitment. The students enrolling are overwhelmingly stable students, haven't been in Chelsea schools since kindergarten, and students who are higher performing on MCAS. The students are overwhelmingly not ELL, nor immigrant, nor severe special needs. Okay. Do we have a roll call for this? No? So do we have a motion to accept the universal? Do we have a second? Okay. No objection, motion passes. Next, consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a field trip to Washington DC for approximately thirty students and four chaperones from May twenty-nine, twenty-eighteen through June first. This is an educational trip for middle school students, other state field trips must be approved by the school committee. Do we have a motion to accept the recommendation of superintendent for the field trip? Second? Okay. No objection, motion passes. Consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a field trip to Greensboro, North Carolina for one student and three chaperones from June fifteen to twenty-eighteen. Do we have a motion to accept the recommendation?
Motion.
Second? No objection, motion passes. And we did the last three. We do have a late motion. We do have a late motion, a late action item. Do we have a motion to accept the action item from, from the budget?
This is a motion call.
Okay. You second? So, action item, consideration and action to approve budget transfers in the amount of $2,395,000 to move funds from the following accounts. Again, this is money of our current budget. It has nothing to do with our FY19. From the ELC teacher salaries, $125,349. From the Sokolowski teacher salary, $258,777. From the Hooks, $164,349. From the Berkowitz, $196,445. From the Brown, $183,222. From the Wright, $353,646. From Chelsea High School, $538,981. So, the total payroll adjustment would be $574,231. And those funds are gonna move into parent information center salaries, $80,000. Special education tuition, $720,000. Facilities extraordinary maintenance, $1,130,000. Facilities vehicle acquisition, $70,000. Facilities McKinney-Vento transportation, $200,000. Technology software licenses, $195,000. Funds needed to cover various expenses that are projected to occur through the end of the year. In addition, funds are being moved to extraordinary maintenance to begin funding necessary facility projects and national geographic software licenses to be used at the middle school. Roll call?
On the motion to approve a budget transfer in the amount of $2,395,000, Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. De Pato?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative, two absent, motion passes. So, moving along to communication. So, we have, from the Rotary Club, we have use of school property requests, and also from MMEP ERCO Collaborative. We have the MIAA Massachusetts Women and Athletics Distinguished Service Award, which is going to Ms. Huffer, and MJ Center for Community Health Improvement 2017 Annual Report, and also, we had a late communication, and it came, and it's included in your packets from the Chelsea Public Library, Public Library Librarian, just to voice her concern over the school library issue that we're having. Do we have a motion to accept these communications? Or... Motion? Second? Okay. Sure, Mr. De Pato?
I'd like to personally take this time myself to congratulate Kim. I met Kim when she first came to Chelsea High School, and right away, she was one of my first recommendations to the superintendent to be hired as a coach, as a coach, as a coach. I don't know how many times over, we hired her. I saw her in her as something that I wish all our coaches at Chelsea High School had. They were dedicated, they cared about the kids, and they knew about the sport, and they were always there. I'm a lifelong member of the MIA myself. I carry my card around. Every day, I'm so proud of it. And I know how important this award is, 'cause they don't really give these awards out as much as I would like to see them. But she's well-deserving on this, and I think I wanna congratulate her. Congratulations, Kim.
Thank you, Mr. De Pato. Any final comments, questions? Ms. Garcia?
Won't be here for our last meeting of the year, which makes me really sad. I'm taking my juniors to Washington DC on a junior trip, so, yeah. I'll miss the guys.
Mr. De Pato, yes?
I want silence for the family of Angelina Anzac, and for the family of Florence Mary Acavelo, and also for those poor families that got burnt out last night on John Street. My prayers go out to them, and God bless them all.
Okay. So, we could stand for the moment, silence, please? Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Objections? Meeting adjourned. Oh, please go by Terry to, we have to sign something, right?